Twenty twenty five, I call this regular meeting of the Kingsville Independent School District Order. We will have roll call Joe Mireles here, Brian Kufal, Martine Chapa, David Garcia, Jacob Betis here, Delma Salinas.
Here.
And Joseph Reese here. Let the record show that there is a form of board members present and this meeting has been posted in accordance with Government Code, Chapter 551, State of Texas Open Meetings Act. We will move to a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to be the flag of the United States of America and consider Republic for which stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, our Pledge of Allegiance to be Texas, one state under God, one individual.
We move on to item number four, public participation. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the board?
Yes, sir. We have Chase Carlisle. Topic is insurance.
Okay.
Right here. Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Trustees and Dr. Martinez. My name is Chase Carlisle with Accra Sure, more commonly known as Carlisle Insurance. For the past twenty-five years, our team has had the honor and privilege to serve as the broker for property and casualty insurance for KISD. We are not captive to any insurance program or company and truly work independently on your behalf. With due respect, it is imperative that the board have all the facts prior to making a decision this evening. This past Saturday, I received a call from Dr. Pitts. He informed me that he was terminating our twenty-five-year-long relationship with KISD and that would be going before the board this evening. As taken back as I was, I had to ask him what brought him to make this decision. Dr. Pitts explained that he had spoken with a few fellow business managers at other districts.
Sorry.
Yes, sir. Sure, no problem. Yes, sir. Have spoken with fellow business managers at other districts that have told them that they recently moved away from our firm to a firm called McGriff and had a positive experience so far. He further explained that McGriff had told him that they operate on a seven percent commission structure which would save KISD money. While he did not show the names of the other districts in which we spoke with, I can assume based on the sales pitch heard by other local districts who it was. I explained to him that I had personal experiences and knowledge that have led me to believe that to be untrue. For example, when our firm became the broker at CCISD in two thousand and nineteen, we discovered there had been additional fees being added to the property insurance policies by the competition in the tune of four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in two thousand and eighteen and three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in two thousand and seventeen. These broker fees were in addition to full commission of sixteen and a half percent built into each policy. Secondly, when our team requested copies of Delmar College's property insurance policies in two thousand and twenty, we discovered the same type of broker fees added to their policies in the amount of sixty-three thousand. Both of these examples were co-brokered by McGriff and a local agent out of Corpus Christi, Texas. Lastly, upon researching Brownsville ISD, another McGriff client, we found that in two thousand and fifteen, the Brownsville ISD Board learned that there had been an additional one hundred and thirty thousand in broker fees added to their policies as well. I further explained to him that every district along the Texas coast, including your district, saw a decrease in their insurance rates this year. As we discussed at last year's board meeting, as you recall, natural disasters have slowed and the market has responded by resulting in lower rates. Of course, these districts who tried something new this past cycle had a favorable experience, but not because of the change in broker, but by the results of the markets which everyone saw this year. As a reminder, this district also saw a reduction in your property insurance rates this year. Our firm delivered between ten and thirty percent rate decreases to all our clients in Region One and Region Two this past year. Tonight's recommendation of changing the agent is not fair and equitable competition with your district in mind. Competition is a part of the insurance industry and something we do not shy from. What is being requested tonight is simply handing our work to another broker to do what we've been doing for the past twenty-five years. He is requesting the board authorize him to sign a letter that will be sent to the insurance companies we currently use, instructing them to no longer work with us and work with the new broker moving forward. Nothing different other than removing us as your broker and adding a new broker with the same markets and the same processes. To further drive that home, it's equivalent to one of your students putting their name on someone else's work and turning it in for credit. I can stand here tonight and tell you that you will see at least a two hundred thousand dollars reduction in your property and casualty insurance this year, whether you pick us or not to continue service for your account. However, because I extremely value this relationship, I would give further as to request the board to allow us to present our renewed proposal this year. And if the board is not satisfied at that point, you can decide which direction you'd like to proceed. Terminating a twenty-five-year-long relationship with a local broker with hopes someone from out of the region can do better is perplexing to me. We have employees that are graduates within the school system and we have employees who have their children currently enrolled in your school district. My family has been a loyal partner in the Kingsville community for more than seventy-five years. Our team has been dedicated and a committed partner of KISD and plans to be, no matter what is decided upon this evening, because our roots are here. I hope you share the value of that as I do. Thank you for your time and consideration, but more importantly, your partnership to help advance and educate the future of this state, these children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the board?
Andrew Mendez, Community Kingsville Pot Holes Patrol.
Mr. Mendez.
Good evening. My name is Drew Mendez, and I'd like to request that the board consider placing an item on a future agenda about adding civic micro lessons into our classrooms. This is not a new curriculum and not a political request. It's simply a structured, age-appropriate way to teach our students small life skills they aren't getting anywhere else. Things like how to report a community issue, how local government works, and how decisions in Kingsville affect their daily lives. I run a Facebook page called the Kingsville Pot Holes Patrol, and what I've learned is simple. Most adults were never taught basic civics, and it affects their confidence and participation for the rest of their lives. I believe our teachers can help lift that foundation with very small, manageable tools, literally one minute a day. So tonight, my ask is clear. Please consider adding a discussion item to a future agenda about partnering with teachers to build one-minute civics framework for our students. It is helpful. I can provide examples, resources, and simple materials at no cost. Thank you for your time. The other thing, last week for the Veterans Day stuff, thank you to KISD for all the work that went into that as a veteran myself. Thank you specifically to Ms. Odie Moreno. Happy birthday to her, and also to Ms. Delma Hadon on this. I know there's many others. Please forgive me, but I just want to thank you guys for spending all the time and effort you did last week for the veterans. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do there anyone else that registered us to the board?
No, sir.
Will we now move on to item number five, Communication from Administration Superintendent's Update. Dr. Martinez.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, staff, and the community present here today. First of all, I would like to congratulate all our schools, Ferris Elementary, Harvey Elementary, Harold Elementary, Gillette Middle School, and HM King for being designated with the Purple Star Campus. This honor is given to campuses that show their support and commitment to meeting the unique needs of military-connected students and their families. And so all our schools have been designated as Purple Star campuses, and we're really proud of our partners in the military families. So congratulations to all our campuses, and thank you for serving our military-connected students. Along with that, I would like to wish everyone happy Thanksgiving and remind everyone as well that this is a time for reflection, for renewal, and also to come back for three weeks after Thanksgiving before the next holiday break. We need to finish the semester strong. We need to ensure that we remain focused on high-quality instruction, and we're certainly doing that, and we appreciate everyone's support on that. Returning from the Thanksgiving week break, on the first day, that Monday, December first, we will have Professional Development Day district-wide. So of course, students do not return on that Monday. They will return to school on Tuesday. So parents, please pray ahead to ensure that all students return to school on that Tuesday, the second of December. As you know, during this time, we also offer retesting opportunities for our high school students taking the Algebra I, English I, English II, US History and Biology star test. And so we will be conducting those during the first two weeks of December. And that is all for me for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martinez. We move on now to item five, the Budget Recap Report, Check Register for July twenty twenty-five. Can be found on pages three through six. Dr. Pitts.
Thank you. Thank you, Board President, Mr. Reese, Superintendent, Dr. Martinez, and members of the board. I'm going to point out a couple of items on the July check register. If you look at the very top of it, go to the very bottom. If you look at the very top of the check register, you see Du West. That is the HMK Drainage Repairs Project. As with all construction projects, they submit pay applications based on partial work completed. They have a they have a schedule of values that is broken down by different pieces, and as they finish those pieces, they submit pay applications for the portion of the job that is completed. So that's how much we paid Du West in July of two thousand and twenty-five. The the whole project was one million four hundred twenty-two thousand two hundred eleven dollars. So that was the portion of the project completed at that time. Irrigation repairs from ABC irrigation, this was related, this was at the high school. It was related to the drainage repairs only in that our drainage, our irrigation system was currently not working because of some clogging underneath the sod. So before Du West started working, our goal was to make sure that it was working, because then if they damaged anything during the process, then they would be responsible for the repairs. So we made sure it was working before the process and that it is working after the process as well, too. And we'll we'll have another update on the drainage repairs project later on. Legal fees, you see O'Hanlon, that was July. It runs a couple of months behind. You also see legal fees there under Nick Maddox and Associates, that we started a flat fee of twelve thousand five hundred dollars a month in June of two thousand and twenty-five. And then I want to point out that the Harvey gate and fence, that is from the safety grant. There are very limited uses that we can use that safety grant for, including the security film fence, silent panic alert buttons, repeaters for the the signal inside a building for mobile radios. And then the last thing is the exterior doors and exterior cameras. Those are the only things that can be used with that grant. I'll take any other questions on the July check register.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
I know you mentioned O'Hanlon.
Yes, sir.
So are you saying that we're not using them anymore?
We we are not using them anymore. You will see another payment on future check register, and I'll talk about it at that time, but but we're not currently using it. At that time, there was one legal situation that was a continuance, and then for the superintendent search, that we're still on that, that hadn't been paid on this July check register. But yes, this July payment was for was for May of two thousand and twenty-five, but we paid it in July.
Last decade, I don't see a need to have a law firm add an attorney. We've already approved Nick Maddox.
Yes, sir.
So that's what, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you. We move on to item five, C, Budget Recap Report, Check Register for August twenty twenty-five. Can be found on pages seven through eleven. Dr. Pitts.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. You also see Du West at the top, and again, for partial work completed during that time period. And we'll have an update when we get to a future item. The next item was Paxton Peterson, which was for all of the supplies for the CTE labs. A lot of you went to Gillette, and you saw the all of these, the setup for that. We're projecting that we will get close to a million dollars in extra CTE funding, because now our seventh graders are taking a CTE course at Gillette, and our eighth graders are taking a couple of different CTE courses over at the high school, and all of that does generate additional funding. You see the food service box truck again. That's a separate fund that cannot be used for anything else, and that is in operation right now. The math professional development, that is the Lasso Grant. That grant can only be used for mathematics instruction, and fifty percent of it is required to be used for the partner, and our partner is Carnegie for that grant. And then again, you see a couple of gates out of the safety grant that we talked about on the last check register. Again, there's limited uses that we can use that money for on the safety grant. I'll take any other questions on the August check register.
I have another comment.
Yes, sir.
I see a lot of charges with HVAC and plumbing services.
Yes, sir.
Are we shorthanded as far as maintenance in those areas?
So it's not a matter of that we're shorthanded. It's a matter that there are minor repairs, that we have the the personnel and the equipment that we can handle, but there are major repairs, like for instance, we need a huge excavation like we did over at Gillette because we had water leaking out of the parking lot. There are certain types of projects that we are able to handle and certain we are not. And then, for instance, with the HVAC units, we can handle repairs for the smaller units, for package units, but for the chillers, we do not have the expertise or the equipment to work on the big chillers.
Thank you. Any question on the Texas Chiller Systems twenty-four nine six two, item eleven? Is, have we done anything to the old gym, the one where we had the, R T C had their Halloween, you know, whatever they called those costumes?
Aunt House. Yeah, yes.
I know there was some chillers up there that had, or the system is broken. Does that?
Yes, Mr. Chapa. That is actually in progress right now. We expect it to be finished sometime in December.
You had to mention something about the safety grant.
Yes, sir.
Did we ever purchase those radios where we could communicate on campus and with, I guess, KPD? Are we going to buy those?
I, we haven't purchased it at this time. That's something that we can look into. I believe those are over a thousand dollars per radio, but but let me look into that and let me get back to you on that.
And that was, I think we talked about it maybe last spring or whenever we're going to get it. That was probably going to be one of the things that we purchase for each campus and maybe for each security guard, or try to, in order to be able to communicate on campus, but in case of an emergency, live the channel, and we're directly talking to KPD. I just, I didn't know if we bought those or not.
Let me, no, let me look into that. Unfortunately, those are are not an expense covered by the safety grant, so we'll have to pay for local funds out of that. But I can get some information for you on that of how much those are and what are our statuses on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board regarding segregation? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Dr. Pitts.
Yes, sir.
We now move on to item number six, New Business. Item six, A, by common consent, the board agrees to consider as one action item the following. Item one, Approval of Special Meeting Minutes of November third and November the twelfth. And number two, Approval of Waiver of Tuition for Transfer Students for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Do I hear a motion to accept that? Motion made by Delma Salinas, second. Second made by Jake Betis. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We now move on to item six, B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the National Parental Involvement Day Proclamation. Can be found on pages twenty-two and twenty-three of your packet. Mr. Segulio.
Good evening, Board President Joseph Reese, Dr. Martinez, and School Board Members. The National Parental Involvement Day Proclamation. Whereas the parent liaisons through the Federal Programs Department establishes informed support networks for parents, encourages parent advocacy, and promotes parental involvement in their children's education. Whereas the family partnerships are strengthened through good communications and mutual responsibility for children's learning. Whereas research has proven repeatedly that students achieve at higher levels and are more successful when parents value education highly and are actively involved in their child's education. Whereas the parent liaisons promote student attendance, strengthen personal relationships with parents, manage the parent volunteer program, and build capacity to parent involvement meetings. Whereas this is a week for national and state parental involvement celebrations and pledges that recognize the importance of shared responsibility in the education of our children. Whereas the Kingsville Independent School District realizes the significance of parents, businesses, and committee members as partners in education welcomes full participation in all aspects of educational activities and strongly encourages all parents to take an active role in the education of our children. Therefore, be it resolved that the Kingsville Independent School District Board of Trustees hereby proclaim November twentieth, twenty-five as National Parental Involvement Day.
Thank you, Mr. Segulio. Do I hear a motion to accept Administration's Recommendation for National Parental Involvement Day Proclamation? Motion made by Joe Mireles, second made by Martine Chapa. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Unfortunately, Ms. Galino couldn't be here today. Her father is in the hospital. So but she does a wonderful job, and she assists with all the campuses and does a great job with the attendance and parent parents. Thank you.
Motion carries seven zero. Break service margin. Now move on to item six, C, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Canvassing of Kingsville ISD Voter Approval Tax Ratification Election. Can be found on pages twenty-four and twenty-five of your packet. Dr. Pitts.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. So the election on November, the four school districts are required to accept the results of an election at a board meeting, and that is part of the process of canvassing the election results. They, at the time that I submitted the board packet, the the county did not finish counting all the provisional votes. They assured me that it'd be done by this board meeting, and they they did. They they gave me the final results today. So I do have the final results, which you have in front of you. The final percentage was thirty-nine point four percent for and sixty point six percentage against. I will take any questions that you have.
Questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Do I hear a motion to accept the Amassing of Kingsville ISD Voter Approval for the Tax Ratification Election? Motion made by Brian Kufal. David? Motion made by David Garcia. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We now move on to item sixteen, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the HM King Drainage Repairs Potential Change Order. Can be found on page twenty-six of your packet. Dr.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. At the time of the printing of the board packets, I did not have the final values of the change order, so I put it in there as possibly needing board approval. It is under the amount that was approved by the board originally, so I'm just going to move into an update. It doesn't require approval at this time. So if you look at the the first page, you see the original change orders, and I'm, so a couple of weeks ago, I went with our our project managers, AGCM, and our maintenance foreman and myself, and the vendor Du West, as well as our engineer that we have on, that was part of this project, who made sure we looked at all the different parts of the building. And there's a few more things that need to be done, and they should be done this week or the end of next week. If you look at those, there are flagstones. There are stones around the beds. If you have like the the succulents that have the palm trees and the other succulents, there are stones that are in those beds. Around those beds, there is a border, except for the part that that is adjacent to the sidewalk. And so when we walked it, I was walking on on some of the stones, and since there wasn't a border against the sidewalk, some of those stones are prone to come down. And at the same time, when there's no barrier, it is a temptation for students to climb up there, grab a stone. So we we talked about putting a barrier there around that, between that and the and the sidewalk. So it's it's not just a cosmetic look. It is also that we want to stop the stones from coming down. So, it's not just a cosmetic look. It is also that we want to stop the stones from coming down. Some of the slopes were fairly steep that with different weather, the stones could have come down onto the sidewalk. And at the same time, we believe that a actual physical barrier will determine, deter students from walking on those stones. Sod repairs, those are some that we damaged, that it was our fault on our side, that we damaged when we shouldn't have been in that area. That's just $500 to fix. And then, there's some painting that needed to be involved. When I talked with our maintenance department and asked if they could do that, they said, yes, if it's painted over first, and they have an extra gallon of paint so that they know the exact color so that they can get it remixed. So, but all of those were determined to be reasonable cost, and still $966.13 within the contingency. Then, if you look at the next page, it'll kind of give you an idea of where we are with the whole budget project. So, you see the first part, that's that $966.13 that we are under on the main project. Then, one of the alternates, there was some work that did not needed to be done once they went underneath. And then, there were some extra hangers that needed to, some extra pipe hangers that needed to be done on another project that, again, until you get into the project, you don't always know what you're gonna find. That's why you have contingencies built in. If looking at everything, they have $13,083.93 in the green that we're gonna be under project, but there is one more that they don't have a quote for, that's probably gonna be $1,000 to $1,500 on the back of the cafeteria where they're gonna put another barrier for the stones that they didn't, not put into that original quote. So, best guess right now, we're gonna be about $11,500 to $12,000 under budget. And we are also gonna get back $11,600 because they did not meet the days that were in their original bid. So, best estimate, we are gonna be under budget by about $23,000 when all is said and done. The only thing that probably won't be finished within a week and a half is they damaged some light poles in the back of the school when they were doing this project. They're going to replace those at no cost to us, but those they had to order. So, overall, the, as far as working with the project manager, the project manager was very good being an advocate on our behalf and anything that was, that was not up to standards. They pushed the vendor to make sure that they made the necessary modifications. And to the vendor's credit, they didn't make the modifications when we asked them to make any modifications. The end quality of the work is great work. It's just that they were a little bit behind on the schedule, and because of that, again, we're gonna end up getting an additional $11,600. I'll take any questions that you have.
Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the...
I'm sorry, no motion needed because we're under the contingency allowance.
Thank you, Dr. Pitts.
Yes, sir.
But we now move on to item 6E, discussion and possible action regarding the agent for the district property and casualty insurance. It can be found on page 27 of your packet. Dr. Pitts.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. So, our property and casualty insurance, in addition to our health insurance, we have been paying a lot lately, and it is, it's challenging for the district to pay that amount of money and to balance the budget. So, we have always been looking for different solutions, and in this case, another solution was presented to us. I've been in several meetings with many Region 2 CFOs, and in each of those, they have talked about their dissatisfaction with their current insurance. Couple of years ago, most people in Region 2 had Carlisle Insurance. Several have been moving away from Carlisle Insurance. They talked about the reasons why. Primary reason was price. Some of them also talked about a reason that the rates were brought to them very late, and they were brought to the board late, and because of that, they had no opportunity to recover. They were kind of held hostage with their rates. I did talk to eight other Region 2 districts that have recently switched to McGriff for property insurance and casualty insurance that have switched to Tasby. All of them have said that they have seen a dramatic decrease in their cost and also that they are very happy with the service as well. I did, again, talk to our previous, I mean, our current carrier, which is our current agent, which is Carlisle Insurance. And again, I did talk to them on Saturday, and he did talk to me a lot about that everybody's rates are decreasing because of the softening in the market. But again, I spoke with all those same issues with the other districts in Region 2, and they also informed me that, yes, that's true, but they also saw reductions anyway, and that they believed that it wasn't all due to the softening in the market.
Do we need, do we know which schools in Region 2, or did they just, did they switch last year or the year before?
Anywhere from two years to last year. Yes, sir. I mean, yes, ma'am.
Well, I have a problem with you notifying Carlisle on Saturday. It's a little late. I mean, I think if you know we're gonna do this, you should have at least given my head up prior to all this.
This is a million dollars that we spend annually.
In property and casualty together. Yes, sir.
And this is the first we're hearing of this. I am not a fan of having an agenda item with no information brought to us, and no offense, but on your word, expecting us to make a million dollar decision. Carlisle has, or their predecessor through Jared Robinett, has been our agent for 25, 30 years. They've been responsive. They are local. We do know what's happened in the insurance realm over the last several years. We are windstorm. I've never heard of McGriff. I'm not saying that there may need to be a change at some point, but I am not prepared at all to address it tonight on the lack of information that I have. I think it would be helpful if we could see some empirical data. If we've got districts that moved and can show a direct decrease which is directly related to coverage, then that's one thing. But you and I both know that the insurance world, things can move based on deductibles, based on coverage amount, based on some writers and things of that nature. And this is just too big of an item to not have at least gone through perhaps a workshop review or some discussion other than just single-page agenda item, in my opinion.
Thank you. And also, another thing, when I started looking at this, you talked about savings, but you mentioned, you know, this is property and casualty.
Yes, sir.
If we were to move to another company, you know, we'll have McGriff as property and then Tasby as...
Casualty.
Casualty. So, you know, now we're dealing with two separate entities where, right now, we have one, who we've dealt with for, you know, over 25, 30 years. So, I'm, and we're, I guess, in the final year of that contract, if I understand correctly. So, just me, I'm not really comfortable, you know, moving so quickly when we are, you know, in the midst of, you know, the final year or what have you. I mean, you know, let them come back next year and, you know, put in a bid. Because my thing is, was McGriff part of the bidding process the last time we sought a new insurance carrier?
So, there are, there's insurance carriers and there's agents. So, the agent would be Carlisle or McGriff, and they are the ones that go out for the bids for, on behalf of the school district with the different insurance companies. So, the district designates an agent, and then that agent goes out for the bids.
So, did that agent submit a proposal, or did we seek them out two years ago? I guess that would be my question.
We did not seek them out two years ago. When we, when Carlisle goes out for bids every year, they go out for insurance companies. They don't shop agents. It's up to us to either, like, we could, on our own, if we had the expertise, we could on our own go out for bids with all the different insurance companies. Since we don't have the expertise, it's kind of like the project manager for the high school drainage repairs, we don't have the expertise, so we hire somebody to do that. And in this case, we hire Carlisle, and they work off a percentage commission agent fee to go out and do the bidding process and to give recommendations to the school board.
Dr. Pitts, so...
Yes, sir.
Does the same thing?
They're an agent as well, yes. They do the same thing.
They're still dealing with the same companies out there, is that correct?
They are, they are dealing with the same companies out there. The way it works in the insurance world is every insurance carrier can only submit a bid with one agent. So, let's say that we have a list of 15 different insurance companies that are working with Carlisle that are submitting bids to Carlisle. Those 15 insurance companies could not submit a bid for, through McGriff, through that agent or any other agents. So, but you're right. They would be doing the same function, but we cannot have two different agents getting bids from the same set of insurance companies.
Dr. Pitts?
Yes, sir.
Brian, get it on the head. I don't need to repeat what he said, but what I would like you to add when you give us data.
Yes, sir.
Are the other school districts, I think Mr. Carlisle said there was some fees associated that they were not told. I think one of the quotes was $400,000, $200,000, different quotes. That sounded to me like they were surprised by that. So, if you could, when you call those other school districts, ask if there were anything like that?
When I spoke with Mr. Carlisle, he did say he had some extra information from me, and that I told him, share it with me so I can take a look at it. I never got that information. He did, he did share another school district that he said, but I called that school district, and that school district said they never had McGriff. So, that was kind of a dead end in that. So, I tried to chase down those leads as much as I could in the time allotted.
Okay. Also, on the other side as well, you know, for example, I think Carlisle charges us for the use of their software. We had to purchase something that's specific to...
No, there, no, not for Carlisle. Must be a different vendor. They charge us specifically a flat 10% fee based on commission of whatever our property and casualty, property insurance is. Okay. And then, our casualty insurance, again, is through a different vendor, PCAP, but Carlisle is still the agent for helping us procure the casualty insurance.
Can you give me two or three names of schools that are with these people that have been there two years?
Alice Ricardo Rivera. I don't have exactly how long they've been with, but I have other names as well, but those are, those are some in the general area.
So, I guess the consensus of the board is they're not really prepared to make a determination this evening, Mr. Maddox. So, would we essentially table this, or maybe after a workshop or something?
In this instance, President, I'd call for a motion to table.
Do we have a motion to table this decision until, after, you know, we receive additional information?
No moves, President.
Motion made by David Garcia, second made by Delmas Salinas. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So, motion says 7-0 to table this decision. We now move on to item number seven, closed session. The board will enter into closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551.071 and 551.074, to deliberate and consider the following. Item 7A, consider and deliberate regarding the resignation of a contracted employee. Item 7B, discussion with legal counsel regarding legal and personnel matters. No action will be taken until we return to open session. We are entering into closed session at 6:13 PM.
We are returning to open session to take necessary action on matters which the board may discuss in open session and upon which action may be taken. We are returning to open session at 7:24 p.m. Discussion and possible action regarding the resignation of contracted employee.
Mr. President, Board of Trustees, it's my recommendation that you authorize the superintendent to accept the resignation of contracted employee.
So moved. Motion made by Brian Kufal.
Second.
Second made by Joe Mireles. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And there are no...
Mr. President, upon further reflection, I would appreciate an action on eight... sorry. On legal personnel matters for a motion to approve as discussed in executive for legal counsel.
Mr. President, I move that we authorize our attorney to negotiate a settlement as discussed in closed session.
Motion made by Brian Kufal.
Aye.
Second by Joe Mireles. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. There being no further action items, do I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting? Motion made by Diego Garcia, second. Jake Perez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we are adjourning this regular meeting at 7:26 p.m.